Expenditures funds, they kind of extend further. Some of these community programs could be doubled up with the redevelopment fund. And that way we're kind of leveraging those art of funds with other funds we have. It doesn't, we don't have to just fend on sales, if that makes sense.
It does make sense to it. I think if we were to do, Jim was dead right. Reserve, we get, sure you have a reserve. I think we should just take that $200,000 from the infrastructure contract. I'm not sure where the other ones come in.
I agree with that too. And then also myself, I think that ambulance is a problem.
If I have to have more education on the ambulance chief store. We got more ambulances and we break the contract with the county and we get out of the ambulance service, what are we going to do with all these ambulance? We just run in the, in the city without a bike. Every time I turn around, another ambulance, another ambulance. I need an education on this.
So the one ambulance we got is not ours. It belongs to White Plains County. We lease it for $1. We break that contract, they go back, they take that ambulance back, we're down to two ambulances. Right now, I can go back and dig statistics, there's a kind of time, we've got all three of those ambulances on 911 calls in the city lines.
Okay, my counter on that is, we get, we break the contract with the county and we get a mutual aid to come into the city.
County, when are we going to get a mutual aid?
I don't know Pat, but I'll tell you what, we're getting million dollar worth of ambulance. I understand the need for ambulances, but every time we cut around the budget, another ambulance, another ambulance, another ambulance. And I agree, there are times, there are, but it's not our fault that somebody fell, broke a leg. We'll do the best we can when we get there.
Exactly. Y'all go wherever direction you guys want to go. But I, but when he comes back, I don't know if we can provide an ambulance, I'm directing the people who you guys.
Sure. So let's, let me just be clear on, on what we're talking about today too, is this is just, this would just be budget, we go back in and decide kind of where that gets spent. If I'm not mistaken, some of your assets or just other equipment came up for at least this, didn't it?
Right. Here we have, remember when we first did this thing, it started out, my initial list was like 320. You had a bunch of returns on it then, it got wound down to like 272, 273, whatever that exact number is, I got that. So we had to fill that equipment there that, you know, we, we chopped out of it on stuff. So I just, knowing the way everything works, I don't see where, you know, right now with, you know, the amount of calls we're turning, ambulance, excuse me, ambulance service in McGill right now is non-existent. Ambulance service in Ruth is non-existent. You know, we, we signed that contract to go to city, if you guys want to get out of the contract, that's a few days to do. We do, you know, right now Lund and Baker are the only two entities in White Plains County that assist us in any way, shape or form on calls.
But as much as I do not want to see an outstanding agency in their medical service, that is a possibility. We have got to put some of this onus back on the county. We are covering so much in the county and giving nothing for it. So that's what I'm saying is, that big red building has two medical facilities out there. And those medical facilities that work in other parts of the state, they may have ruined firearms, I'll give you that much. But, once again, we have a capital budget project and if we have to do that, that means the rest of the city departments pull away from that. I just want to see more study and a little more pressure pushed off on the county on this right here. They got, how many ambulances do they got? They got them out there in silver linings and brought them back. You know, they got them stacked around that big red building like the-
And right now, I think all the entities that got their license, they got one license that they were trying to put LACO on. So I've several calls out there, there's been non-existent help from them. And, and I agree, they, they step up and they're going to have to do more stuff and I brought this up in the commission meeting last time, that, you know, they got some serious issues with them depending on training and everything else. And it's slowly get to the point that I feel that we're getting more and more dependent on that we're just going to do everything and it just ain't going to happen. I mean, it's-
So, once again, this isn't a decision on whether or not to buy the ambulance tonight, it's just to allocate kind of a rough budget number.
I like the earmark money and then we got to look at it when the time comes. If it's not needed, we don't need it, I'm fine, go spread it out.
And there's, there's nothing that keeps the council from going back in and saying, okay, we didn't use any for that, let's reallocate.
It'd be nice to have an earmark if something happens, you know, we have, you know, something goes on, we lose one, something, you know, instead of scrambling, looking for where it is. Because when the time comes, we don't need it, things are going good, things are functioning by the county, fine, we'll push it off, use that money towards tiny homes or whatever else is on that list. It, it don't matter to me, but it'd be nice to see you have an earmark. So if we do need it, the funding is there and available for it.
If we change the title to EMS, fire department slash EMS.
Sure. So we can, if we did that, and then the suggestion from councilman here, the councilman Williams Harper is that we take the infrastructure from two to maybe 1.8 million with the $200,000 going towards general fund, cushion budgetary, yeah. How do we feel about that?
Well, yeah, I would like to make a comment because I, I disagree with Mark and all of them on Denise and, number one is that we have, what's, what's the age of our old city ambulance?
The oldest city one is the first one that we bought brand new. It's, I want to say, I have to go to the family, 2016.
Okay, and if you were to break that down, how soon could you replace it?
Right now, when I talked to the guy that was here on Saturday, I just questioned him a little about it, and he says, tell me right now, if we ordered an ambulance today, we wouldn't even see a chassis for two years. And then you got probably another year that they'd pay with the bill of all.
So we're talking about three years out. I think we do need for that to be served.
And now, there'll be time for-
No, no, the market can change going forward. Right now, everything's so screwed up, the supply chain everywhere, it don't matter what you're trying to do, everything goes back, oh, it's COVID related, it's COVID related. I don't know about you, that might sound paranoid hearing that. It's been over and done with, but the supply market in general, worldwide, is just a mess right now. It could get better and it might not be that in a couple of years, but I, I still agree, I think it'd be nice to have that money earmarked.
Just to be clear, that money is currently being voted on to be earmarked, it's just open-ended at the moment, and we'll have the ambulance discussion at a future date.
With the time, huh?
Yeah. So if those changes are meaningful to the council, I'll make a motion on that. So we're doing 1.28 million for infrastructure, 500,000 for housing, park cemetery, we did a fire department EMS for 250,000, park cemetery for 150, community programs for 150,000. Is there a motion? Motion from councilman Williams Harper, do I have a second? Second, anybody?
I'll second that.
Second from councilman Sperry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go back for our public hearing at 5:30. Item six, the mayor will recess the regular city council meeting. For a public hearing at 5:30 PM on following topics. I have one council member, city building official Peterson. Public hearing discussion, only consideration of a petition for vacation or abandonment of a road or easement by applicants Robert and Joseph R. H. Biamonte, who wish to have the streets under easements between APN 001-141-02, 001-141-03, and 001-141-04 abandoned, and also an 82 foot by 25 foot strip of Third Street dividing 001-141-02, Ely Nevada. The general location is Ely Street and Third Street, Ely Nevada. I'm in normal open streets.
Mr. Robson, Representative Biamonte, some questions obviously to put on the agenda for, would clarify that sound incorrect with you?
So this is just public discussion at the moment, though? But they may have some questions, and we'll hand you that back. Thank you. Is there any comment from the public?
I support this change. I don't know what's going to go in there, but if it's a nice home, I wanted to know that it's down the street on the corner, you haven't addressed the encroachment, the old cars, all of that. We're going to improve, but we're going to give these people a chance to improve the community. We need to reflect that in the surrounding area. You know, I don't-
Is there any other, any other public hearing? Like for your, if not opposed to public hearing, go on to item seven, discussion possible action. Items pertaining to the public hearing. Councilmember, city building official Peterson, discussion for possible action, consideration of a petition for vacation or abandonment of a road or easement by applicants Robert and Joseph R. H. Biamonte, who wish to have the streets under easements between APN 001-141-02, 001-141-03, and 001-141-04 abandoned, and also an 82 foot by 25 foot strip of Third Street dividing 001-141-02, Ely Nevada. The general location is Ely Street and Third Street, Ely Nevada. So the corrections have been done?
Yes, Mr. Robson. Corrections has been done, changed from the 82 by 15 to 82 by 25. And there's all this.
And we're back in front of you for any further questions. Are there any questions from the council?
I just want to confirm, where it says, and I'm just relaying this back to you, it says, and also an 82 foot by 25 foot strip of Third Street, this individual seems to have taken part of the street. It is correct. So a question that individual had, we lost over here, we're coming off of the Renaissance Building, the road's going to be narrowed, narrowed down.
The actual improvements are quite a bit inside of this, this 25 foot strip that it's up for discussion of the abandonment, there's, there's no improvements on that currently. We're narrowing down to 60 foot with some line of the rest of Third Street.
Would it be correct to say that it's part of the right of way, but not part of the road?
Correct. It is designated right of way, but it's, you know-
What it winds up being is 50 foot of the street by on each side for sidewalks, or 60 foot right of way. When this is done, right?
That would be potential, yes.
Yeah. 60 foot street still, but not narrow the street any, it's just narrow the right of way. And then on each side, that reason they're asking, we want to take it down to 25 foot, is the 5 foot on each side versus Kirkland sidewalk, that's probably 60 foot.
For usually standards on their collector's street or larger street, that, yeah, that is.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Are there any other questions? What's the pledge of the council?
I would like to move to-
Motion to approve from councilman Sperry, to a second. Second from councilman Alwood. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're in sort order. Thank you.
Just a minute?
Yes.
How about we get through the block with problems?
We'll, we'll have that right now. So we'll go back to new business, we're going to take item 11. Councilmembers, building official Craig Peterson, discussion for possible action. Approval of an emergency abatement action pursuant to City Code 4-1-22 to exterminate and remove a cockroach into the station at 1128 East Alton Street, parcel number 00206803. Determined by the city building official to be a public nuisance that places the public in immediate endangerment of health safety and welfare. Mr. Peterson. Council, before Mr. Peterson speaks, I do believe that the owner of that property is present on, is that correct? We're going to start, I appreciate you letting me on, we're going to start.
Certainly, thank you, everyone. I just want to give everybody a quick timeline as far as how this thing started and how it progressed. I was contacted by the sheriff's department on 7/7 this year in regards to infestation that was causing, gave quite a nuisance in the area. I did investigate that day, determined that indeed we had quite a problem over there. I made contact with the property owner. On 7/7, I advised that he get professional management on that date, and I had kind of had some informal communications up until between then and the 29th of July, which he had stated to me that the professional help was going to start on 8/1. On 8/1, I was contacted by the emergency property, asking if I knew any remediation professionals that would be able to assist with this problem. I put him in contact with Jess, with Apex, who's our local pest control professional. I was told that, a couple of days later on 8/12, I was, I was told that Jess and the owner had agreed to treatment to begin on 8/13. I was then contacted on 8/15 by Apex, who informed me that no deal had been made and no treatment had been started. So that's why we put this, this item on the agenda. I do have a small update. I did get a, a work contract, a remediation contractor from the Las Vegas area and the property owner, with a proposed start date of 9/1, for them to be up here to begin remediation. With that being said, I am still asking for the emergency abatement authority, just in case this deal goes the way that the other deals went and doesn't, doesn't materialize. I would like for the authority to immediately step in, hire a contractor at that point. If, if, again, if there's remediation that's, that's been contracted, doesn't take place in that timeframe. 9/1 is quite honestly the earliest I did get a contractor there as well, from the numerous contractors that I've spoken with. I do have a number that are willing to come to Ely and handle this problem, but again, Thursday of next week was the earliest I was going to be able to get that taken care of. So I would still ask for that emergency abatement. Whether or not we need to spend the funds in order to abate this issue will be determined by whether or not treatment begins on the 1st of September.
Who is the owner of the property? Jack Schofield, is that correct? And Mr. Schofield, if you're on, if there's something you'd like to address the council on, and ask me if you'd have to hear it?
He's not identified.
I did have a brief discussion with him prior to the meeting, in spite of that he wouldn't, wouldn't have any comment. Are there any questions for the building official?
Not my concern, I live way away from there, but I think these people are concerned. It says, respective female German cockroach to produce an egg capital every six weeks. So we've been dealing with this since before July 7th, so these babies are out there making little cockroaches all over the place. And it's unfortunate, we can't get this thing happening a lot quicker, I mean-
10,000 in one year, one adult will produce. Page one of that.
Correct. And I wanted to give the opportunity for the property owner to remediate the issue on his own, and again, help to facilitate that success. I was promised repeatedly that it was going to be taken care of in a timely manner. Followed up as often as I could, and, and, you know, much to my disappointment, every time I followed up, there seemed to be a change in the game plan. Since then, in order to help, you know, stop the festering, the water that shut off the water over there, the, the entire building's been vacated at this point, and I closed all of the units of occupancy. I know that doesn't necessarily help stem the tide, but it, it at least kind of helps us, you know, address the problem from a vacant building standpoint.
So to be clear, there, there currently is a plan for remediation to get next Thursday?
Correct. That's, that's what's been, been vague to me. I've seen a contract, a sales, a, a sales contract received from the company in Las Vegas, that's going to be handling this, and I was in communication with the gentleman who owns that company today, and, and I told him 9/1 is going to be the hard date for, you know, if granted, the emergency authorization.
And so you're seeking authorization to abate from the council in the case that that doesn't proceed as much?
At this point, correct. I do have money in my budget that will cover the abatement, and then however we recover that, it's going to be, you know, outside of, of my special.
I have a question. How do you know the company that he has hired would do that sort of job that I would expect that you would do? Is there any guarantee?
They're, they're a licensed contractor in the state and about, and that's, that's as far as I got. They, they, you know, serve a, a large clientele down in, in the Las Vegas area. I am not a pest control expert, I have reached out to pest control experts. You know, I'm not going to say that what I've been told by the pest control experts that I talk to necessarily line up with the remediation method that's going to be proposed that was proposed by the company in Las Vegas. But I'm a layperson when it comes to infestation remediation. I've, I've heard more about German cockroaches in the last 45 days than I ever wished to in my entire life, and I hope not to deal with this situation, you know. It's, it's a very serious problem. I've seen one other infestation that was, that was either remotely close to as bad as this. And as a matter of fact, I need a visit to the site on Wednesday, just to grab some more photographic evidence, and there were still cockroaches climbing out the windows, you know, as I was there, so. But yeah, no, I, I apologize for any delay on my end, but, but again, we need to let them remediate the problem, you know, before we took the emergency action. Or at least, you know, I was promised that that was going to happen all the way through, and unfortunately it doesn't materialize.
Can I ask one more question? Do you know, know enough to let us know when that infestation is worked upon, how long it takes people to see some results?
Well, the company right now is proposing fumigation, which is going to be more or less an immediate solution to the problem. And a part of their proposal was a granular treatment around the property to prevent the spread to the neighboring properties, you know, which obviously we already have. But, but to prevent, you know, a wholesale escape of these things, you know. And again, I've gotten a little bit of conflicting information from different people that I've talked to as far as the best practice on this, and I just don't feel qualified to speak to the best practice, but, you know, I've gotten a couple of different sources now, and, you know, there is some disagreement, but, you know, it's, it's teeny minor.
Mr. Robson, do you care to continue your-
Yes.
Please.
I want to make sure that you guys know how bad it is in your neighborhood. On page one, it'll tell you what the life expectancy of a cockroach is. A bad infestation of which this is, 10,000 produced in one year. You probably got that meeting down there in that basement right now. The walls sealing, from what I understand, they just crawl. Then, on page four, why I am so upset about this is, on page four, I have identified what diseases that causes. I know three of the neighbors that have found cockroaches in their home now have, have, they have an immune system, of which my husband is one of them. So this disease, you know, they, they carry this disease. So I just want you to know, you know, we need to take care of it right away. Bob and I went out on our patio before we came, and I took pictures of, what, five different cockroaches that were running across the patio. They were sick because I've got a mow around my house, I've been spraying so much. My grandson, Ramat Tusaun, came up, and he and Jess put their heads together and tried to come up with a plan for us. And it has worked in our home. And like I say, they're getting through, but they're, they're sick. But these other people that live in this neighborhood, they don't have that. They haven't started that process that I have been going in, you know, for months. So there's real problem. And another thing I wanted you to know is all that, all the belongings that belong to all those people in those apartments, they took them someplace, they're living someplace. They were cockroach infested. So Lund's got cockroaches now, wherever the other parties are living, they've got cockroaches now. So this is a real, real serious problem. But my husband really nailed it when he said that, my husband describes the situation perfectly. The apartment complex is an incubator for cockroaches. It needs to be taken care of immediately, or they just spread all over.
Are there any other people from the neighborhood that want to be heard?
I'd like to say something, but I'd like to see if I can do it from my seat, please. I'm compromised, I'm standing out.
You'll be as loud as you can be, so we can pick your own hands up.
I don't think the P E system's working anyway. All I'd like to say is that we have a real bad infestation with a creature that carries some real bad diseases. And almost all the neighbors are older, like me, and have compromised immune systems. And it really bothers me when I walk out on my patio and a disease carrying bug is running all over. And I just feel something should be done as quickly as things can be done.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Is there anybody else in the neighborhood that'd like to be heard?
I'm Bill Wilson, and I live across the alley from the subject apartment. And I've got to sing the song. I woke up Monday morning and looked upon the wall, the roaches and the bedbugs are having a game of ball. The score is one to nothing. The bedbugs are ahead, the roaches hit a homerun and knocked me out of bed. And that was, I'm not in New York City apartments in the 1930s, and at that time, that was the appropriate jingle. You know, I certainly hope that Ely doesn't face the same need for another version of that. But I want to thank Mr. Peterson for his work, helping us, you know, senses and plans to gather. We do have a, we found two or three roaches in our, in our garage, which exposes to the, to the alley. And we certainly found new aisles and that lover that we've rarely visited before for insecticides. But we, we do appreciate any help that we can get from the city. Thank you.
Any more from the, can you please?
My name is Wesley Ann Hopel, and I live across the alley from the cockroaches. And anything that you can do to expedite this would be wonderful, that they're out of control, and it's just really, really nasty. So we really appreciate your interest. Thank you.
Councilman Sperry?
Yeah, I was in, this, I never realized this, I had a big book problem once, but anyway, I did just try and research a little about the eggs, because this is a big problem, you know, that I see in the book that you guys represented here. It looks like their, their eggs take about 30 days to hatch once they're out, but, so you, you, you just can't, it's going to be a couple of times to eradicate these guys, maybe even three, I don't know, but it's 30 days on their ideal temperature, that's a holy moly. These things are pretty, pretty unique, so I think we should do an abatement, an emergency abatement. I really believe that, I think that we definitely want to make sure this guy has a plan to not only come up here and spray him, but come back to come back more times after that.
So, so the proposal that's being made right now by the remediation company is for fumigation. So they're going to actually pump the toxic gas into the house, and only to kill them all in one shot, essentially. And that's, that's kind of the strategy that's been laid out to me, as far as the proposal to use this method. The method that's been proposed to be by other professionals is boric acid and a growth inhibitor treatment. And that is a multiple step treatment, which, which generally takes two or three visits. So, but again, I'm getting conflicting information from professionals. I need it treated, you know, and again, if, if they go through remediation as far as the fumigation, and it's unsuccessful, and we still have the issue, if I have the emergency authorization, then I can get, you know, I can approve the other treatments to come in, you know, without any further action.
So I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move to approve this, create an emergency abatement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, from councilman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we appreciate those from the neighborhood council.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move back to our regularly scheduled programming. Item B1, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, annual performance evaluation of city fire chief Pat Stork, including but not limited to consideration of character, alignment with conduct, professional competence, or physical or mental health. Possible action included is not limited to termination, suspension, demotion, reduction in, and promotion in order to engagement retention for no action.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
I have comments from Congressman Carson, and he has a statement.
Okay.
Hi Jennifer, again, I'm sorry I cannot attend the meeting tonight, but I do believe Pat Stork is a great fire chief. He's very committed to not only the city's need, but the county as well. He's a great leader, does one job with the staff and the power. I am full supportive of race for him. I urge the council tonight to please consider the state's average wage for fire chief. You will probably notice that Mr. Stork is one of the most unpaid fire chiefs in the state for that.
Good luck, sir. Make your turn on the air.
Better way maybe coughing a little bit, allergies going on. Nobody had any questions? I'm going to give you a quick rundown of the panel last year. Start off with the staff update. We've been running one or two people short the last year and a half, two years almost, but with the help of the volunteer- but with the help of the volunteers, driver, only career staff, myself, we've covered every college, came in. That includes.